It just did, I mean, back in the old sunrise yesterday.
I haven't finished.
She did a good job.
She was like, yes.
He is.
Um. Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the WA Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, the first of October twenty twenty five. We'd like to welcome everybody attending in person today as well as online. Today's meeting is being live streamed and recorded and will be available for viewing by the commission's website and YouTube. Commission members may refer to technical devices throughout the meeting to assist them in considering the information before them. And I'd like to start by acknowledging that we meet on the lands of the Wadjak people of the Ngar nation and pay our respects to elders past and present. Today, in relation to apologies and leave of absence, we have no leave, oh, sorry, we do have leave of absence from Commissioner Lakey and Commissioner Sandry, and we have all other members attending in person today. Disclosures of interest in relation to item three point two, the standard structure plan for Smith Beach yelling up. Um. We have a disclosure of interest from Commissioner Adair, an actual impartiality interest in that a family member um has provided advice in relation to the matter. Um. Is that correct? Is the way to say thank you, Commissioner Day. Um. The same item Commissioner Bennett has declared an indirect pecuniary interest in that Commissioner Bennett has advised that the employer act for the landowner on other unrelated projects. In relation to both of those, I understand that you're both happy to step out on the items. Thank you very much. In relation to item three point three, the proposed MRS amendment for Brabham High School site in Brabham. Have two declarations, the first from Commissioner Bennett as a direct pecuniary in that CLE, her employer act for the development. We'll stand your stepping out on this item, thank you. And in relation to Commissioner Hall and actual impartiality. Just in that Commissioner Hall has advised that the report owner is the housing authority and that development WA is developing land to the north and could also be involved in this area. On that basis, Commissioner Hall, do you wish to step out?
Okay, thank you.
In relation to item four point two, the planning control area number one hundred and fifty nine Hutton Street, Osborne Park. Commissioner Shears has declared a perceived impartiality interest in that the PCA is located in the city where it is employed. Um. Members, any comments in relation to this as a perceived impartiality interest? Happy to accept that.
Yes, thank you.
And in addition. I would have further declarations from Commissioner Heron in relation to the standard structure plan Smith Beach, item three point two. Um. Human Urban is a former client that whilst at Urbus, um. Whilst you employed at Urbust, no work was undertaken for more than two years and no current relationship exists. So has declared that as an impartiality interest. Members, I'm happy to accept that as an impartiality interest if you are all agree. Okay. And in relation to the uh standard structure plan three point one. Uh. Saracen is a former client also whilst working at Urbus. The last work undertaken over two years ago and then no current uh relationship, so also an impartiality interest. Again, I'm happy to accept that as an impartiality interest if the commission agrees. Thank you very much. Are there any further declarations of interest? Okay, thank you. Um. Also, just to note that the WAPC is both a landowner and a decision maker in relation to the item four point two, the MRS planning control area at Hutton Street in Osborne Park. This is an interesting comment shared by all members and will not prejudice our ability to determine the matter. Moving on then to declarations of representation. And I do have one in relation to item three point one from Commissioner Bennett. Standard structure plan for Narabut Beach estate in Narabut. Commissioner Bennett has advised that she previously has previously been involved in EPA consideration on this matter and formulating the recommendation to the Minister for Planning. Commissioner Bennett has also advised that she conducted a site visit with the EPA and proponent in her capacity as an EPA member. Um. Just to clarify that we have received advice on this and um that we we believe that this is fine for you to continue and stay and that that would be valuable. So just for commission members' information.
Okay, just to clarify that, um, recommendation went to Minister for Environment, um, rather than Minister for Planning.
My apologies. That makes perfect sense. I'm reading off the page, but I should know better. Thank you. Um. Also, on item one point five declaration of due consideration, can all members indicate they have received and considered the agenda ahead of today's meeting? Member. Thank you very much. Confirmed. And confirmation of the minutes of Wednesday, the twentieth of August twenty twenty five. Members, are there any queries or comments in relation to the minutes? Happy to move in second. Moved by Commissioner Hall, second by Commissioner Heron. Any dissent? Thank you. The minutes are carried. So we will now go to deputations and presentations and I will go to you, Sam. Thank you.
Chair, um, I welcome everyone that's present in order to make a deputation this morning. Um. All of our deputations are in person this morning, so welcome to you all. You will be invited to join the table to deliver your deputation this morning. Um. You have been advised for your allocated time, which will be managed by a timer, which will appear on the screen, which will count down that allocated time. If you do have a PowerPoint presentation this morning, this will be displayed on the screen throughout your presentation and you're requested to advise as you wish to advise the slides. So moving to the first deputation on the agenda this morning, which is on item four point one, the proposed MRS amendment of number one, four, three, six, at lots twenty two to twenty five, Helendale Road, Wallaston. We're welcoming Dan, yes, but to join us.
Morning Chair, uh Commissioners and staff, um thanks for the opportunity to speak to you this morning. Um. This is an item that's been sort of with the the department and the commission for a number of years and is um very pleased to see it progressing through. Uh. We're presuming that obviously as the item's confidential, we believe that the recommendation would be for support. So we endorse the recommendation for support and without going into the history too much, because the previous report was very comprehensive and I think covered all the issues. So I presume that the current report does the same. Um sixteen hectare property, it's within an urbanising context uh for landowners um with a portion of the site still being utilised for auctioning, but obviously that's uh no longer a particularly viable use in that context. Uh. If we could move to the next slide, please. Uh. The rezoning plan gives a good indication of the of the urbanising context, that the landholding um is very much surrounded by um urban development or all sides. One of the key things that I was hoping to confirm with the commission this morning was that the current recommendation is for concurrent rezoning of the land, uh not just to urban but to development under the um city's town planning scheme. Obviously would make a a big difference in terms of streamlining the approval process and considering um considering the context would be logical that the client would be able to move to a structure plan in due course, um rather than having to proceed with an MRS amendment. Uh. If you could move to the next slide, please. Uh. Process today, we've essentially had uh three rounds of agency referrals. So we had a um a pre-lodgement um period um back in twenty twenty three, uh that generated a raft of uh matters to be addressed, which you can see on the right hand side of the screen. I won't go through them. Um. I'm sure they're covered in the officer report. There were no major issues identified in there, um but what that did was just sharpen the pens for us in terms of putting the final board together. Um. We addressed all of those matters uh and presented the amendment formally in April of twenty twenty four. Um. It then went out for a further period of um pre-initial pre-initiation referral, um again, no major comments. Uh. And then initiated for formal advertising. Um. From reviewing those submissions, there were no major issues again identified, which was pretty consistent with previous referrals. Um. Excepting that the Department of Health had some queries in relation to um onsite servicing for affluent disposal, um which we believe is able to be dealt with um as a logical progression of the planning process through structure planning and subdivision of the land and isn't a um isn't an issue that should be a deal breaker so far as the rezoning under the MRS is concerned. You could move to the next slide, please. Um. Commissioners probably would have seen this one before, but we were required to prepare a concept plan for the land to demonstrate how it could be integrated with surrounding development. Uh. That concept plan basically proposes uh two thousand square metre lots. We'd anticipate that a structure plan prepared for the land in due course would probably have a very similar form or at the very least incorporate some of those major features, but unless there's queries on that, I won't dwell on it. Um. Bottom slide, please. Uh. Essentially, um, I think the officer report would probably demonstrate that all of the land, um you know, it's suitable for urban zoning, again, considering the time I won't step through those matters, but would reiterate um our desire that the final recommendation would be for the current rezoning under the scheme um as well as support for transfer to the urban zone. Um. And that the matters raised by the Department of Health, we think can be dealt with um through the regular planning process and not an impediment to rezoning. And uh, just for the slight run over, but I'm happy to take any questions if there are. Thank you.
We do appreciate your comprehensive deputation. Members, do you have any questions?
I do.
Let's go ahead.
Thank you. Um. Could we just get slide two, um, if possible, please? Yeah, and having had a look through and understand everything that's been said, there are in terms of the surrounding lots, there's obviously two remaining sectors that remain rural. Can you just confirm whether there has been any conversations or any liaison with those adjoining landowners in terms? Have they been specifically precluded? Because I couldn't find any reference to that.
Okay, so um on that plan, the landowner on to the west, which is on the left hand side of screen. He is uh also a family member, but he declined to participate in the rezoning. He um wasn't wasn't ready to do it and will has suggested he'll proceed with that in due course. Um. We have sort of factored in a response to that through the structure plan, but essentially it's just an extension of a road reserve um location to be determined. Um. On the right hand side, that land, uh, we had not spoken with that landowner, but that land is quite constrained by some environmental constraints uh and is not part of the family and had understood that that had been getting developed as part of the Conti Gardens development, which is the urban area sitting around that land on the right hand side. Uh. And then the land to the south uh has been developed. It's essentially like rural residential.
Yeah, that was to the west and the east. I was, uh, but thank you very much. Thank you for clarifying.
Further for Dan? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next deputation this morning is on item three point one on the agenda, which is the standard structure plan for Narabut Beach. Um. And we're welcoming Lucy Shea, Joel Saracini and George Hajar Gabriel. Thank you.
Morning.
Morning. Um.
Thanks for having us here today. Uh. I rely uh in for our deputation on the background and the officers' report other than to highlight that the structure plan extension that has been applied for is required because the proposal has been in the EP Act part four process for half years. And also to note that lots uh five O one to five O four, my clients' um lots have been the subject of a number of development approvals over the years. And the detail of the structure plan that's uh the subject of today's deputation was actually prepared for the purposes of a different development proposal. The tourist village style use of the land is consistent with the current proposal, but the detail of the design layout, the different types of accommodation um are different to what the current proposal is. After receiving correspondence from the commission, my firm prepared a response setting out a full legal analysis of the operation of section forty one of the EP Act. We refer the board to the detailed reasoning set out in that letter. Our consideration of the meaning of could have the effect of causing or allowing the proposal to be implemented in that section. Case law um indicates that these words require that the decision here, the operation of the discretion to extend the structure plan be capable of being the final decision, allowing implementation of the proposal and also a necessary decision in the proposal's approval process in order for section forty one to apply. Neither of those requirements is met here and the absence of either is enough on it on its own to ensure that section forty one does not apply. By contrast, the officer's report offers no legal analysis beyond the statement that the commission is prohibited from exercising the discretion in clause twenty eight. We did request a copy of attachment six A, which we can only assume does uh include some legal advice, but uh where that request was refused. This puts us at a significant disadvantage. And this disadvantage is compounded by the fact that the operation of section forty one three in the context of a structure plan, the decision here, and in particular the extension of a structure plan, has not been the subject of judicial consideration. In this context, and given the existence of, we are aware of a number of independently prepared legal advices on the point with full reasoning to the contrary of the position put in the officer's report. We cannot conceive that any legal advice the commission has received could be definitive in its conclusions regarding the operation of section forty one three, which tends to suggest that a conservative approach has been recommended on the basis that there's ambiguity and no definitive legal support in favour of our suggested interpretation. Essentially doubt is being weighed in favour of no decision. The underlying objective of section forty one of the EPP Act may make this approach appropriate in some situations, probably many. However, we contend that this situation is different. The objective of section forty one is met by weighing any doubt in favour of the extension maintenance of the status quo here. The structure plan is not new. It was endorsed since nineteen two thousand and six and in fact even longer, an earlier iteration. Any details in the structure plan that are consistent with the current proposal are contained in scheme provisions. So there is no risk that extending the operation of the structure plan will approve anything materially inconsistent with the possible for part four decision. Uh. In the current circumstances, the objective of section forty one three is not met by refusing to extend the structure plan. So there is no reason to interpret any perceived ambiguity about the operation of the section in favour of prohibition. Finally, um just very quickly, uh we understand an alternative motion um was added to the item late yesterday. Recommending consideration of the extension um be deferred until after part four assessment is complete. Whilst my client has no practical issue with the idea of deferral of the decision, we do have a significant concern that that deferral can only occur if the commission has received legal advice stating that the structure plan can be extended post-expiring. So we would be very um strongly um in favour of ensuring that the commission has got legal advice to that effect. Because if that that motion might seem on its face to be the easier um motion to rely on, particularly given uh the decision under part four is not far away, but obviously it relies on on that legal advice and and uh we caution that that has been received before relying on it. Um. Sorry for for going a little bit over, but um I'm very happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Lucy, and thank you for your comments in relation to the alternative motion. Um. We don't take these matters lightly, so I appreciate your comments. Um. Members, are there any questions? Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Bennett.
But Lucy, could I ask a question of George? Would that be okay? Sure, unexpected. Um. George, I'm interested in your comments, um, sitting aside the um the legal discussion that Lucy's put forward. Your comments in relation to the current structure plan and its relationship to the development application and value, current structure plan.
Yeah, I I think the the importance of it, obviously a structure plan is a juror document. Um. And the importance of having the structure plan in place is that it does offer some guidance. Our current development application, whilst it it isn't exactly as per the structure plan, there are elements of it that are consistent with the structure plan and and simply the notion of development in a certain configuration is reflected in the structure plan.
Thank you. Anything further?
Sorry, if I may, sorry, further to that, if I may, George. So in in terms of the I suppose particularly given the pathway which is being undertaken, would you see that that interrelationship is uh reduced by the fact that obviously that part seventeen um, I suppose, has a higher level of discretion available?
It is, yes, because certainly part seventeen does allow the commission the the greater discretion.
Thank you.
Anything for the commissioners? Thank you very much for your deputation today.
Next deputation is the most important, item three point two, just the standard structure plan for Smith Beach yelling up. I'm request for extension for approval period. And we're welcoming Craig Wallace, Fred Will, Rowan Clark and Callum Hart.
Morning Chair, Commissioners, um Officers, um thank you for the opportunity to make a a deputation. Um. I haven't um, I haven't had the benefit of the legal advice from the Department in relation to the the recommendation either. But I have seen the advice of my two colleagues and I agree with it. In effect, this this is a deputation um in support of a clause twenty two uh application to extend the period of the Smith Beach um uh development guide plan. Uh. The recommendation is that you are booted uh from setting that application on the basis of section forty one of the EP Act. Uh. I would disagree um for two reasons. Uh. The first reason is that section forty one um subsection two refers to a proposal that has been referred, is still outstanding um uh with EPA and a restricted decision that would have the cause or allow that proposed, that is um uh proposal to be implemented. Uh. Page five of the officer's report in relation to this item suggests that the proposal in question is the part seventeen DA. Um. It's not the same proposal for the subject of the 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 structure plan. Uh. And and extension of a structure plan, as we've heard from um from Lucy, is that it will not and cannot have the cause or allow that part seventeen DA to be implemented. That's basic planning logic with respect. The second reason is that um slightly different to the proposition um with Narabut is that um I'd invite you to have a look at section forty B of the EP Act, which effectively disengages section forty one in the circumstances it relates to a strategic Uh, disengages section forty one in the circumstances it relates to a strategic proposal, restricted decision relates to strategic proposal. By definition, the the, um, the structure plan is a strategic proposal and it says so on the ministerial statement. Um, what that means is that it's a proposal that is prospective and effectively requires. Some future applications or proposals to change its designation from a strategic proposal. Section forty B was inserted into the E P Act as a consequence of some case law and notably. Ex Part A Chapel and Row and the and the D E C. To effectively deal with the discrepancy between what is a strategic proposal and a significant proposal. Um, one thing that I want to make perfectly clear, uh, in terms of this application to extend. It doesn't change the structure plan, ought to change it. There are no, um, uh, proposals that relate to it that could be implemented. Uh, and the 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 the, uh, the effect is that, um, it does not change designation. Uh, to a significant proposal. So on that basis. Section forty B quite simply suggests that, um, uh, section forty one is disengaged. And the commission has the, uh, discretion if this is this extension, and I'll leave it to others to expand on that.
Thank you, Craig. Um. The Smith Beach project's now been tied up in environments and planning assessments for nearly four years, well beyond our control. This delay has imposed significant costs and now threatens existing approvals as the structure plan is set to expire. If our development application doesn't proceed as planned, expiry would introduce unnecessary risk and uncertainty. We submit, as you heard, uh, that the commission clearly can and should prove an extension. And on behalf of the owners, I thank the commission for its careful consideration. And urge you to please support a two year extension as requested or three years as recommended by the city of Busselton. In order to provide a stable and consistent planning framework.
No, Jerry, in to in terms of the, um, the alternative motion, happy to answer any questions in relation to that, but the 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 answer to the question is is very similar. Um, there is the 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 section. Section in relation to the 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 ability to assess the structure plan is silent on whether or not that can be done retrospectively. Um, if the commission is of the view that and, uh, or the view that that can be, um, done. Uh, then a deferral wouldn't be problematic. If however, there is no legal advice to support that contention, then there may be some problems with.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, are there any questions, members?
Sorry, through the chair, if I may, and again, I suppose similar to the previous, uh, uh, proposal. And noting the, um, the situation in place. In relation to the pathway that's been taken. You know, would is it accepted that there is a level of separation between the D A and the structure plan?
Yeah, in our case, it certainly is, and I think I'd give a similar answer to the previous deputation. Um, the development proposal doesn't align with the 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 development envelope that's set out on the structure plan, but. In this case, the structure plan does contain about forty six development standards, which the the D A has assessed thoroughly. And we believe is an important baseline for the consideration of the D A. Um, I would probably just add that. It it it's not all about the D A. Um, I I think that there's situations that can occur, like a D A may not proceed. And we think there's still value in having a structure plan over the site. And in particular, the city of Busselton's view on this is that it it should be extended until it's normalized into the new local planning scheme. Which I I think is a very fair approach.
Thank you. Uh, through the chair, uh, I suppose further to that, then the core question is is. You wouldn't anticipate, however, that you would be, um, initiating a new D A relying upon the structure plan ahead of a determination. Which is currently before the Minister for.
Correct.
Thank you.
Anything further, members? If you have to hold.
Chair, I'm I'm just curious to, um. Has there been any discussion with the city on why the normalization didn't start earlier, well before the expiry?
Uh, I think the normalization is part of a game review. I think the city of Busselton has a, um, particularly. Complex scheme. Um, I I think they have put, uh, initial drafts of the scheme together a few or three years ago, so. It has been an ongoing process, but, um, as you know, commissioner, these things, uh, sometimes take some time and, um. In in this case, it's just the the, um, the the request is to extend the structure plan. Uh, a couple of years to allow those processes to to play out.
Thank you. Members, are there any further questions? Thank you very much for your deputation today. Well, thank you. All that concludes our verbal deputations for today, but just noting we have received a number of written deputations and I draw your attention to. Um, the deputation from the city of Busselton. Um, in relation to item three point two, which you've just heard the other deputation on, and that does go to the preparation of the local planning scheme in that deputation. We've also received a written deputation, uh, in relation to three written deputations in relation to the P C A for Mortimer Road. From John Burgess of Burgess Design Group, supporting the item. Lorraine Elliott of Lorraine Elliott Planning Services against the item. And Kylie Munro, Bruce Lee Munro, uh, the Munro family against the item. Um, members, at this stage, I'll just pause to see whether you would like to break for a confidential session before we move to determining the item. I do have one question.
Sure, I I have a question.
Yeah. So, um, sorry, members of the public, I'm going to have to ask you to re- leave for this moment while we're just behind closed doors. Some print second that we closed into the, that's moved by Commissioner Deere, seconded by Commissioner Paul. Any dissent? Thank you, that's carried. Thank you very much, everybody. Welcome back to the meeting. Just had a short, uh, call. Session and we're back now dealing with at item three, non-confidential items for decision. The first item that we're dealing with today is the struc- standard structure plan for Narabut Beach Estate in Narabut. Request for extension of approval period. And we are joined today by Mark Gendrazak and Kylie Woods and Ian Ripper. Uh, hello Kate Gustafson as well. Thank you for joining us both. Um, you've heard the deputations today. Is there anything that you wish to add? Or I go to questions from members?
Thanks Chair, uh, no nothing to add at this time, happy to take questions.
Thank you. Any questions, members of our planning staff? Commissioner Hall?
Thanks Chair, I'm just curious to know what happens should the structure plan not be extended. What happens practically to. Other. Decisions that could bear, uh, post that date.
Uh, thanks through the chair, um. Yeah, so the if the structure plan, uh, isn't in place and a an application is made. Uh, for subdivision or development, um, in that area. Uh, the regulations set out that, um. There is a the ability to consider those proposals, um. And I believe the the phrasing is, um. Uh, subject to the principles of orderly and proper planning. Um, and obviously having regard to any other, uh, relevant elements of the planning framework that apply to that site or proposal.
Further, Commissioner Hall?
Uh, yeah, just for, thank you, um, so. What impact would this have on the part seventeen D As that are currently in place if the structure plan's not, uh, extended?
Um, thanks through the chair. My understanding of the the interplay between the the part seventeen. Uh. Legislation and the the guidance there on decision making and the regulations is that it would. Um. Not be considerably different. Uh, again, we're 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 in a. Uh, a jury guard space anyway for for structure plans, um. And again, there's this, there's, um. I guess there's, to me, there's some parallels between the the part seventeen guidance for decision making about. Uh, principles of orderly and proper planning and and your regard to the planning framework. Um. There there may be, um. Some some further expansion of that from from Kylie or Ian, um, if if I wish to add anything. On that.
Um, I think that's.
And I I think it's controversial that it's, um. That there is the power to approve absent a structure plan and it's a discretionary considerations.
Thank you.
For the commissions.
Thank you. Anything further, commissioners?
Okay, well, we'll move to consideration of the item. I'd just like to turn your attention to the fact that we have a recommendation. With the report and we have an alternate motion, a ton- alternative motion for item three point one, which has been printed. For you and should be in front of you, so I'll open that to commissioners to move, uh. If they prefer, thank you.
Are the alternative motion.
Moving alternative. Thank you very much, and that's thank you to Commissioner Bennett. Um, do you respect the alternative motion?
Um. Thank you through the chair. I I would say that, um, uh, obviously as has been highlighted, very careful consideration. And has gone into, um, this position that there is, um. I think a little bit of consideration in terms of, um, wanting to respect, um, planning process, but also respect. The legal frameworks that are applicable. And ensuring that, um, our decision quite clearly demonstrates. and ensuring that our decision quite clearly demonstrates a commitment to the long-term appropriate development of these localities, but not wishing to unduly complicate those through decisions which may be subject to dispute. So with that, I did feel that the alternative motion better reflected the commission's view that it is purely deferring the decision until such time as it clearly has the opportunity to make the decision as opposed to remaining silent on it.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Heron. Commissioner Bennett, do you wish to make any comments?
Yes, thank you. I support Commissioner Heron's comments. I do note that our ability to make a decision under part seventeen is not restricted by the structure plan or not, but does relate to the principles of orderly and proper planning. The alternate motion gives us the ability to consider that structure plan at later date, following the conclusion of the EPA processes, which I am comfortable with and based on the advice from staff, comfortable the ability to be able to do that. And the alternate option also, sorry, the D A may that part seventeen development application may be able to be considered a future date without a structure plan, particularly in the principles of orderly and proper planning, if that development application comprehensively deals with matters in relation to the site. And we did hear from Mr. Ted Gabriel around the particular components that are consistent and others that have a sense of and are doing so on that base, some confidence about the alternative.
Thank you. Commissioners, are there any further comments?
Thanks, Chair. I think it's very practically preferable to have a structure plan in place, but I think we have to acknowledge there are different legal views that have been expressed. And I think the alternative motion does allow existing processes to be followed. And to, by deferral, it means that we can then consider this following the environmental assessment decision.
Thank you, Commissioner Deh.
Thanks, Chair. I don't have a problem with the alternate motion. I would actually like to make, well, I would like to put an alternate wording to a couple of the the words that are in here, just the, just having listened to both sides of the legal arguments, and I I do understand the use of the word prohibited is a very strong word to me. And having looked at the bits of legislation, I would like to move that the recommendation be changed to note that the W A P C is restricted by section one, two and three of the E P Act, et cetera, and then part two. Want to change out the word prohibited again with restricted. The reason being that I think it's it's more appropriate, given the wording that we have actually been had put in front of us, about it being how to make a restraint, is restricted by this as opposed to prohibited.
Is there a second of the amendment? Seconded by Commissioner Brooks. Would you like to add any further comment?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Brooks, any comment?
No.
Is there any dissent to the amendment? Like that's carried. Thank you very much. Back to the substantive amended alternative motion. Any further comments? Okay, any dissent? Thank you, that is carried. We'll then move to item three point two, the standard structure plan, Smith Beach Yelling Up, request for extension of approval period. Again, we have an opposite recommendation and we have an alternative motion in relation to this item. It is open to members to move either, and it is also open to move the alternative motion in the same wording as we have just adopted for item three point one, where prohibited is replaced with the words restricted in the two places. We'll open that to members. Commissioner Hall, which do you choose to move?
Move the alternative as amended with the words restricted.
Seconded, seconded by Commissioner Shears. Do you wish to speak to it, Commissioner Hall?
Just briefly, just to add, I think it is it is complex, but I think it's a pragmatic solution that's going to find common ground to preserve the legal duties for the commission, but also still allow for development processes and assessment pathways to occur.
Thank you. Anything further?
I may, just the only other one I would add, given some of the commentary that was included as part of the deputations is we very much acknowledge the lengthy process that's occurred through the D A process, which is obviously separate to this. And in fact, I think we need to be highlighting that we are wanting to not compromise or complicate that matter as opposed to hindering it.
Thank you very much. And I'll just add, given that it came up for the Smith Beach deputation, sure of whether this is an assessment of a strategic proposal, the issue of forty B. And I would just add that this assessment by EPA is of the significant proposal, which is part seventeen development application and not the structure plan, which is a strategic proposal. So is there any further comments in relation to this item? Any dissent? Thank you very much. That's carried. Can I say thank you very much, Ian and Kylie, for your attendance today. Don't wish to state the full of large, of course, you're always welcome.
Thank you, Chair.
So we're now moving to consider item three point three, the proposed M R S amendment item for Avon. And we are joined by Anthony Mascara and Oscar Thompson, item. Anthony and Oscar, thank you for joining us. Are you happy to go straight questions?
Thank you too much.
Are there any questions, members, on this one? Very straightforward. Of course, I know. I have to ask. All right, we'll move straight to mover and second place. Moved by Commissioner Brooks and seconded by Commissioner Shears. Is there any dissent? Thank you, that is carried. That concludes our non-confidential items for board. So we will now be moving to dealing with the confidential items. And I will ask for a mover and seconder that we close the meeting to the public and thank everyone who's joined us online today. Let's move by Commissioner Shears and seconded by Commissioner Brooks. Any dissent? Thank you, that's carried.